Well, Natalie, the special session is over, thankfully. What a wild four days it's been.
Yeah, it was quite a, quite a ride, short, but very long also.
Yeah, it's short, some public comment was short, but the days were long and of course, all of the disruptions made it very interesting. But I'm really excited to hear what you have to say about the bills that got through, the bills that failed and what Colorado taxpayers, what Colorado voters need to be aware of.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, so gonna go through here and we had a total of fourteen bills that were put forward. For the general public, they probably really only heard about a couple of these, but it's of value to run through briefly. Uh, what was all presented over the four day period. Um, but first, uh, gonna go into um, the big takeaways and the end of the day, what occurred is that proposition HH, which was the voters took a very strong stance on it with sixty percent of the voters saying no. And granted, there were different reasons that people might have voted no. Whether it was, I mean, we talked about it in the videos, there were so many different things wrong with HH. There was a variety of people, but the I seem to be a very strong message, don't touch our taper refunds. And we want meaningful property tax relief. I think of all the voices, those would have been the loudest, you know, they do that little thing where diagramming, you see what's the loudest voice? That was the loudest voice um, and by population, not just vocally. But what the, the special session did was take proposition HH, break it out into pieces. And they even said it during their setup that there's several subjects here. And so it's appropriate, we've got these separate bills. Well, that takes us back to the question when we asked about proposition HH. Does it comply with the single subject rule? It's oh, yeah, 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 it does. Oh, lo and behold, it actually was probably about eight to ten different subjects really, if you want to take a look at it. So with that, the Democrat legislature took HH, broke it out into pieces. Because one sponsor could only carry one bill, so they broke out those different pieces. Basically presented the same package, except that it was just divvied into different boxes now, different bills. One thing it did not include, so they did not take this, but keep in mind, all of these bills really relate to a one year period. They're not going to be stretching out years and years and years. So there's an advantage because actually at the end of the day, we took quite a heavy hit over the last four days. And I don't think people understand that. They're going to be reading the Democrats press release, which is blah, 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 we gave meaningful property tax relief. And we'll talk about this and shy away from the fact that we took a hammer to parts of Tabor again. And we, we need to, to remember that meaningful property tax relief at the beginning started with residential, commercial, all these different things. The legislature in breaking up Prop HH in the special session. Actually, we didn't really end up in that much better of a position. Except for the simple fact that this is one year versus being a ten year in Prop HH and was gave away the consent. But again, unless we change that three party control, one party control down there in those three chambers. We're going to continue to see this stuff ramrodded through. There's got to be at least one safeguard down there. So breaking part, Prop HH, um, they were able to ram through the things they wanted, the bills out of the fourteen that were there that were Republican were killed uh, within first committee. None of them stretch past that. So it's all on the Democrats, what was produced out of this and the people are going to be quite disappointed with the parts of it. Uh, the Democrats take full responsibility for that. Um, Tabor money was diverted in this plan. We're going to go into a couple of different things there. Uh, they like to gloss over it, but the reporters are already on top of it. So people can search out different articles. The one I would suggest um, is Colorado Public Radio. Andy Kenny has been doing a real fine job talking about bringing up that local government mill reduction. We talked about which is a real no brainer solution, but it just wasn't done enough. A variety of reasons, but his, his article he just put out this afternoon with also a recap of the session. Said Colorado lawmakers on Monday concluded a special legislative session that was focused on tax relief for homeowners. But when the smoke cleared and the last calculations were completed, it was clear that Democrats' tax policy reforms had gone far beyond property taxes. And that is what occurred. We had handouts to special interest segments of the population taking from one to give to another. Um, here's the biggest problem, those taper hijack bills were kept confidential until minutes before they were heard in a committee. They had legislators and the sponsors had an opportunity, because we've been talking about this more than two weeks. Right? We have been talking about this months and years. Alright? They held these bills confidential from the public until right before the committee assignment, meaning you were bills, you know, Brandon, you and I were down there and witnessed that when we asked the bills, if the committee opens, the fiscal sheets are not even in the hands of the legislators, which is really one of the key things you can go to it for like a quick hard summary and what's going to be the dollars, all those things. Instead of going through, you know, twenty, thirty, forty pages, go to that fiscal note. The bills weren't even available online. They held up committee hearings. Meanwhile, people in the public who were prepared, like the night before, I printed out, you know, a stack of bills that were previewed. But those were all ones that actually most of them are Republican, they were at least posting their bills before the session started. The Democrat ones again that were going to hammer on Tabor were not even put up for the public to witness. How would they know to sign up for remote testimony when they didn't even know the bill was going to come up, right? And to catch up with it, what committee is it? I mean, you're like operating in the block and don't get me, I don't want to be wrong on this at all. I don't blame Capitol staff at all, they, you know, to keep up with that baloney and not open your mouth and go what the heck, you know? When, when it's run like that and the poor staff members, so I want to give them a thumbs up for being able to deal with what they could. This really boils down to the responsibility and the, the inability of those Democrat legislators, they didn't fail on this, this special session. They didn't try. And they withheld stuff. They didn't post bills for the public to know what was going to go on affecting their Tabor refunds. That pool of money. So um, and you know, you and I got there uh, and, and we're watching there on the opening day. Right off the get go, the very first thing they did is they make sure to take care of the orders of the business. And that was to eliminate the transparency rules. And it just started for a very what all this time in discussion and they hold off, Polis was asked multiple times, what's your backup plan? And kept saying basically no comment, no comment. And then a stunt with the baseball bat and the piece of Plexiglas they had to take two wacks at to push it out of the way to get out the scroll paper, you know, with his goggles on and all that stuff. And it says, oh, you know, the worst, worst um, you know, the, the Democrats, it was, it was clear they didn't, they did not want to work with the G, the Republicans on these bills. They were killed. On the car, go ahead.
I was just gonna say one thing to add, just to give people an idea of what it was like down there. So like you said, Natalie, we were down there the first day, Friday morning. You know, we, we had some, we had done that video the night before, we had an idea of what was going on in the legislature, but nonetheless, it was so confusing. I can't understand how um, there's any pretense of democracy or representative government. When a concerned citizen could show up, they don't know where the committee uh, is being heard for that bill. They don't even know what the bill is, the bill numbers have changed. The actual uh, the number they had initially to kind of give them a, a, a preliminary number now is a different bill number. And they were in different buildings, nobody seemed to know what was going on, nothing was on the website, nothing was released. I mean, it was dang near impossible for any concerned citizen to show up, to testify, to have their voice heard and even just to understand what was happening. I mean, it was a total total dereliction of duty in terms of these representatives who are supposed to be protecting our quote unquote democracy that they're so proud of. So I just wanted to say that.
And I agree. And actually, I'm thinking back now because I mean, it was like jam packed. I mean, you know, Saturday, whole day down there. I mean, we were down there for this, this rally, but I don't even think they actually were posting the start time till like going back thinking now, whether it was maybe twelve hours before, twenty-four hours before as to the start time. And when you don't know what the bill lineup is, you don't know what the calendar is, how does somebody participate in that? And yeah, there's a Zoom process, but frankly, you know, it's not everybody understands, even there's remote testimony. Um, another, there was these Capitol lockdowns, which you and I went through. So we had that whole thing going on. And if you went to that exterior door, because you can enter the Capitol from two directions. Um, what it actually, it didn't say anything on the door thing and it said, I thought Saturday, Sunday closed on it. But it didn't have any sign like special session. So yeah, the doors are usually just open and you would pull them open. But there were people, I was outside quite a few times taking breaks and I'm watching people up and they're reading it. And some going up seeing it and they're like not going to go in. And trying to remember if I had remembered that sign right, but I thought that's what it said. It didn't say like special session occurring. You know, enter here, something like, you know, and then, but then there was a lockdowns because of the protests going on. So I know there were also people who actually intended to go there for the special session. And because the guard would not be right inside the door, the doors were locked. So just, I mean, in the whole, I understand there, you know, safety. You know, I'm not going to go down into that thing. Okay. But let's just say it was really a lot, you know, but going to that too. Even when we were trying to watch from the gallery. And then the galleries were shut down. So the only way that you could actually either, if you brought headphones, great, or if you had headset or something like that. You could listen in by knowing that you could go to Colorado channel. Not everybody knows these things. I guess, you know, I take a lot of things probably for granted, just haven't been around, but would people necessarily know that? So they can't go up in the gallery, which is where they told they were supposed to be. So they go down in this hallway where the lobbyists are. Because the lobbyists are right outside that door, right? They got, they sent notes into those people on the floor. And so the public then, because they can't get in the gallery, is down in this room. They've got the overhead going with, with the audio from inside, but you got lobbyists and everybody's chit chat and so you can't hear anything. So I mean, it was just like, that like, and I'm gonna talk a little bit, well, I'll go into it now because might as well. So when it was, it was Sunday and they a, a friend alerted me as to where oh, one was and I was able to chime in virtually and, and testify. And that's the property tax bill, we're going to talk about a little bit here. And um, so I was able to quickly, if I'd been like, I don't know, fifteen minutes off of that, ten minutes, there would have been a cutoff and I wouldn't have been able to call and get on. And since I wasn't there at that moment, I wouldn't have been able to go into the room and testify. So anyway, I get into Zoom again, how many people know how to do all these things is probably fairly limited. And as I'm going into my grand three minutes, grand, the grand three minutes that you get. I waste time by explaining to them that this was a very difficult participant, process to participate in. And I'm no newbie. I mean, I'm, I'm fairly experienced, I'm not going to be able to say I'm a pro, but I said it very nicely too. It said, so um, and then went on to talk about the property taxing and how it was crap, we're going to talk about that a little bit later. But then the chair of the committee, which is a Meg Frolic, it says in response, because just when you testify that the electives can then ask that panel questions for anybody who's not done it. So I'm sitting around hanging on after my testimony, just waiting, is there any question? And the chair of this committee, Rick Meg Frolic, Representative Frolic says, well, yeah, we were understanding it was, we were, it was difficult to navigate, but look at in the good sense. We got it done before the game was on, so you have nothing to complain about. The game, the game, are you kidding? I mean, I didn't even know, is she talking about the Broncos game? I mean, but you know what, in my mind, sorry. Property taxes and taxation is a little bit more important than the Broncos. But that really did illustrate to me how little public participation, the public's voice, them taking time out to go sit around, not be, know what's going to go on. Not be informed about bills until the last minute, to be sixty percent of the voters, and let's say it's, I kept saying fifty-five. Let's say percentage of the voters said, don't touch Tabor. And they just went ahead and did it. They didn't care. They, I think it was kind of really their grand plan to have the special session perhaps, but they were working on it for a long time. And so I'll, I'll let you chime in, I kind of, I had many episodes, I had a personal one-on-one, well, there was one other, the chair of that committee, oh, another, you know, story after story, when you go down there. Yeah, you can participate virtually, but you can go down there and you can have a good old talk. And tell your state representative like Chris Degruy Kennedy, how I really feel about what they've done. And then he keeps going with this blah, blah, blah. And he goes, and I'm not really happy with this whole process either, but that's what he said last time. And then he said, he said, I was proper, I'm lukewarm. Yet he's the sponsor of the bill, but you're not, you know, the process sucks, but you know, so. Alright, I went off. Go ahead.
No, I, I, I completely agree, there's a total disregard for the public, for the public's input, for the voice of the public, for the voters. I mean, they don't care, they don't care what the people say. It's so, it was so, it was so obvious, I guess, you know, trying to get this testimony done, I mean, especially on, on Friday. You couldn't, they said, well, sign up on the website if you want to speak, we're out of the sheets. And then the website didn't list the committee, you go to the committee, it doesn't list any bills, you couldn't actually sign up at one point. And there was technical issues, it was just, they don't care about the voice of the public and having public input. I mean, clearly they're hiding the bills, not giving the information out until the very last minute. I mean, it's just a total, uh, a total example of, of what these people think of us, these politicians. But I did bring up one of the testimonies that I gave on the Van Winkle bill, I encouraged them to vote for it because it was a very simple way to reduce property taxes, to fulfill the mission of the special session. And my point was, you could do this, this very simple bill, pass it and try and regain some of the trust of the people of Colorado. I specifically mentioned, there's a reason the people of Colorado do not trust the political class, they do not trust the government. It's because when you do these stunts, like these special session that we just saw, you're, you're playing shell games with our money, you're passing convoluted types of things. It's just a process that makes people either confused or turned off to politics or just makes you feel like they're pulling one over on you. And it was just so obvious that these politicians were using this opportunity, of course, to to push their own special interests, disregarding entirely what the voter said. So you know, it was a, it was a very enlightening day, hopefully a lot of people or four days, hopefully a lot of people are waking up to the fact that this government is less than representative. And uh, you know, there's, it's time for a change down there, definitely. So uh, yeah, that's kind of my two.
And, and from the big picture point of view, right now, the process is you pay your property taxes, cut a check to the county itself. The county then dispenses some money to those local governments. What has just occurred is a beginning of well, it's not beginning, but it's expanding. It was really um, the school districts just with backfill. Now what has occurred is we've taken the other um, twenty-eight, let's be generous, twenty-six hundred governments out there. And these now twenty-six hundred governments, instead of doing the process as it is now with a direct to the county, county dispenses it. Now the state is looped into it. And the state, as we have expressed in a prior, prior video, the special districts under this thing were considering it like a game of Plinko, like old prices right where you dropping the chip down, are you going to get this, you're going to get that. So there have been a few like, like, you know, not a loud voice, but enough of the voices just said, whoa. All of a sudden, now you've got the state centralizing this process, it's really been at a local level. So what are all of the games then, shenanigans, changes? Remember, all of this is statutory. They can change it whenever they want down there. And as I just proved, it only takes them, how many days? Well, the way they're transparent, you think, four days to get it done. So this is a shift in local power and they claim it's local part, local control, blah, blah. No, it was actually opposite. Now, I'm not going to completely argue, but for those who would, because we want caps at a statewide level. We can't be trusting the local governments to do this. And going back to your Van Winkle bill. I mean, that was a six percent cap. And I think we even had a brief chat where none of us actually thought, we thought, all thought that was too high, right? It was too high, but it was clean cut. And his bill was not the first one, that one went through, I, I don't know the bill number, but um, earlier this year. Uh, it was run through and killed because it was a Republican bill with clean cut. And that was again, too high in my world, but six percent. So if you want to talk about negotiation compromise. And Van Winkle even said, when we were sitting there in that room, that it was not set in the title. So there was room for discussion, but no, no discussion occurred. Nope. Every one of the, the Dems, I got this excuse, I got this excuse. And I love it when the, the whole thing, by the way, comes up, I'm sorry, we got to talk about this one second, because I kept wanting to say it down there and I didn't get to say it. They kept talking about, we don't like the GOP's plan because it uses part of the reserve. And when they're talking about the reserve, they're talking about the savings account. Alright, no, two different savings account government has. One Tabor says you've got to keep a three percent emergency. Tabor being smart knows government will spend, spend, spend. But then meanwhile, they've got like a record amount of another savings account right now. And I have to just laugh and laugh because Republicans wanted to take backfill, more property relief out of that backfill. But at the end of the day, I have to think back how many times I've heard Democrat legislators or their groupies, whatever, to go and say, we don't like Tabor because it doesn't allow us to save money. Oh, really? So where did those record reserves come from? Oh, and by the way, we still got Tabor. Where we're at least getting some of our refund, right? And they still have record savings that they've put together. So another one of those um, things they like to say Tabor does, uh, which is totally false from them. Tabor actually encourages government to be stronger and do these things. Alright, so I had to mention that. I just, I know, I know I'm going to say it to him ten, fifteen times at least. Every time I say, I thought Tabor didn't allow us to save money. I thought Tabor, really, really?
Right? All of a sudden, there's this extra money. Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just another example of how things are true and it's convenient for the political class and then they're, they're not true and it's not convenient for them. So uh, yeah.
Okay, alright, so now I'm in control of the slideshow, so I guess I should get going here. Alright. So first up, we had emergency rental assistance grant program. Um, in summary, what this did was uh, it's putting thirty million dollars, assuming nothing else changed, I think I write on the number though, thirty million dollars um, in this one year period. So again, special session gets dealt with really this next year. So none of these should be in theory, be forever government living programs. At thirty million dollars, puts it into emergency rental assistance, this covers everything from eviction defense to uh, rent, to deposits, uh, to moving, moving expenses. Um, a whole host of things. One of the most important things, so I don't go too far off on this, is that number one, Prop one, two, three, which passed last year is already taking about three hundred million dollars of our Tabor refunds, because it was approved by voters, we didn't really have grounded opposition to it. And it passed, we could have beat Prop one, two, three more than likely. Now we're going to live with it. Prop one, two, three, already diverted money from Tabor to exactly what this one does. So this money is now going to be thirty million on top of already those prior plans, all the things already in existence. Colorado Coalition for the Homeless, they get money from the state. There's a whole long list of people that are really calling now uh, profit from homeless type kind of activities. Uh, it's, uh, I forget, it's not coming to me right at the moment, you'll probably think of it. But here's the biggest thing to note, is that what these programs for somebody to get a grant for one of these programs is that um, in this case, the person applying has to be no more than eighty percent of the area median income. And note that really up till now, I, I'm not an expert on this, but I've seen enough with Prop one, two, three last year and all of that. That we've been using a sixty percent AMI. So what does that mean to the average person? What that means to the average person is that instead of government just serving the low income, the government is now increasing programs for middle income. And that's, they had made moves towards this before. This is now the thing that kind of opens that door, where all of a sudden we're paying eighty percent of AMI. Most people don't know what AMI is, right? So I, I don't know the current figures, I had to look it up. So the figures from May of this year, from city and county of Denver, indicate that, and which I should have given you a slide, I'm sorry, didn't. That a single person earning fifth, sorry, sixty-nine thousand nine hundred, sixty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Let's round to seventy thousand dollars. Would qualify under that eighty percent AMI. So a single person living by themselves, if they are earning less than seventy thousand dollars, is now qualifying for emergency rental assistance. When we look at something like that, that tells me that we are further expanding government's scope purposefully. And the money comes from somebody, right? So that's thirty million dollars coming out of the general fund. Note that that's not out of Tabor funds, but it's coming out of the general fund. But that is still thirty million dollars that was also producing, providing some service. And now it's being diverted. And people talk about, well, you know, the woman with the, you know, seven children. But with these qualifications, it also means that those who really don't want to work and produce also get to take advantage of these programs. So I went on to this one a little bit long, but want to do cover it because probably it was in my, one of my top three, because of my concerns, especially with it going up to that eighty percent AMI. It's now setting a new threshold, new standard, and those kinds of things then expand on from there.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, so it's a thirty million dollar spending bill going to these nonprofits, so they're paying off, I'm sure, you know, these special interest nonprofit groups, I'm sure there's some connection. You know, between them and the legislators or them and local governments, them somewhere, they probably have existing relationships, you know, it's these people, same people are down there lobbying at the Capitol potentially, you're hiring lobbyists. Showing up at these fundraisers, showing up at the, for these political events, are getting thirty million dollars. Uh, there's a homeless industrial complex, right? As what people sometimes call it, this idea that, you know, there's no industry developed around homelessness. And it's becoming profitable, it's becoming profitable for some of these groups to run, so they're going to potentially, you know, inadvertently possibly perpetuate some of the issues just to keep the money flowing. So yeah, not, not a good thing, especially it's, it is wild to see that expansion to eighty percent. If you're making less than eighty percent of the average person, then you qualify for an emergency grant. I mean, it does seem a little, uh, a little broad, but there we go.
Yeah, um, so moving on to this next one, um, this probably is the most damaging one. Uh, do you want to go into this one or do you want me to?
Yeah, I mean, the, so the, you know, earned income tax credit, it basically is like a type of progressive income tax in some way. Because, you know, in Colorado, we have a flat income tax, everybody pays the same amount. However, there's a credit, a tax credit, so you know, most people know that it's not just a, a way for you to pay less taxes, you actually get money back if you qualify for this. So there are certain people uh, that the state chooses, that these politicians choose to get money back on their income taxes. So meaning that some people are going to maybe get, make more money than they're paying into taxes, some people are not going to pay quite as much income taxes. And then these, these guys over here, the ones the politicians hate, like people who actually make a lot of money are going to be paying all the taxes with no relief at all. So it's just a way to redistribute tax money. Of course, this has been expanded tremendously by the Democratic majority in the state legislature for many years now, creating this massive basically wealth redistribution welfare system in which they're, they're deciding who pays income tax and who doesn't. I mean, it's totally uh, progressive income tax on, on so many levels.
Yeah, and uh, it's, it's interesting, some people have pointed back and I haven't, I haven't fact checked this, I'm, I'm not going to comment, that the earned income tax credit actually goes back to an era of Ronald Reagan, potentially. I mean, there was, uh, it was part of a relief program, so it started with the feds. And and I have to fact check again that somebody else can go down that rabbit hole, I'm gonna. I've got enough at the local level, but somebody get it at the federal end. But then Colorado was allowing a person to get up to twenty five percent of that credit. And and it's a refundable tax credit. That's the key where somebody doesn't necessarily have to pay tax. To then get a cash refund. So the the minimum, it what it says, I I have a hard time believing they call earned income tax credit because there's a a minimum. And there's a maximum. Well, the minimum is one dollar. So somebody, I mean, you you don't even get um, you've got to have six hundred dollars before you trigger. Uh, reporting the IRS, so I don't know how that all works, but they're they're filing it on their paperwork that they've earned some, so. Let's just say you have a, I don't know, my example, they, because they, they wanted to use. You know, of course, a mom with a bunch of kids and that's their example. But we've seen in our society, there are a lot of other people. Uh, that go through these programs besides the mom that's got, you know, a whole brood of children. Take example of, we have a twenty three year old. Who is very much into gaming. And occasionally wins some of these contests. There's actually people who make money gaming. And let's just say they're not that great at it, but if a person like that is showing income of, say, four hundred dollars. They're able to then get. And and they haven't paid any income tax on that because it hasn't triggered anything. But they get a file for an earned income tax credit and get now part of our Tabor refunds. Back to them. Even though they didn't contribute to the income tax system. So there's a lot of examples of the EITC. And if somebody really wants to dig into it a little more, do a fairly quick Google search and you'll find that. Uh, I believe I'm going off memory, it's been a long four days. That the IRS estimates thirty three percent of the EITC filings. Maybe fraudulent. Now they say maybe because in certain cases where they've asked for the follow up documentation versus just filling out the form. Because IRS doesn't necessarily go through and do it and audit every single one, they may be doing samplings. Of those third that don't res- that are maybe fraudulent. Some of those don't even respond after they get the request for documentation. They then drop out. So how much safeguards are there for taxpayers within these programs? I can't. Say much except to read these articles where there's a pretty high amount of suspected questionable filings to get this money. So now that the we continue, we've got the federal end where people are getting that cash back. But you also have the Colorado end. So is Colorado going to be doing those same safeguards against handouts of Tabor money? This is one of the bills that was not published until Friday. At what time would you estimate? The session was supposed to have open at what nine, right?
Yeah, I mean, it was probably. N- I mean, probably around that time. I mean, nine o'clock is when they uh, you know. Uh, s- started the session, the, you know, regulars on the House floor and the Senate floor. So probably around then, I would assume, I can't ima- I don't remember it being any earlier than that.
So I don't think this one was, I think it was um with this one, the one of the ones, I think rent assistance. Was up the night before, but this is the one that really takes the hammer on Tabor. And for this one, it originally started at three hundred and seventy million dollars. Coming out of Tabor. And somewhere along that line, um, cause I I had, I don't know exactly where it occurred. But then it changed to a hundred eighty five billion dollars roughly. So if we want to look at whether this was a little nick in our in Tabor's armor. Or a lot, I would put it up as a lot. That's a lot because Prop one, two, three from last year is was two hundred and seventy million. Three hundred million, right in that range. And here we've got about a hundred eighty five million now again, taken from Tabor. So we just celebrated the eight point one five billion dollar party. We were supposed to be above eleven billion with upcoming refund. They're just chipping away at it piece by piece. And here they did it with really zero notice. Um, I talked to a neighbor last night when I was returning something to him and he says, you know, you say really good job on that HH. And I had to just sadly tell him. By the way, they just convened for the last, our bed for the last four days and pretty much did everything we told them to. And I think the average person out there, unless they're really a political, you know, watching. Uh, they don't have any clue. So, moving on.
This last thing I'd like to say about that one, just so people are clear, that did pass, it did get sent to the governor. I don't know if the governor signed it already, but I'm sure he will. Uh, so that just, just to be clear, that one hundred and eighty five million dollars would have come back to the taxpayers as part of our Tabor refund. Instead, it's going to be given out to who this, the government thinks it should go through, through this earned income tax credit, just just for clarification, if anybody, uh, just to get that point across.
Yeah, it's and and it was expressed by many of the legislators and and the few who really testified because. Those people didn't know what was going on. There was very few people um is that. That with this money, putting the government takes money off the top, basically. They're kick picking the winners and losers and add that directly go back into somebody who can desperately need it, getting their money back is by fo- far far the best way to spend it. So then, next one, property tax task force. People, is this one, I want to make sure, yeah, we're on the one to repass. Um, this one is is could be real short. Nineteen members, mostly appointed, mostly a politicians. Or appointed by politicians are gonna be on this task force. I think there's two positions. One representing um, real estate, uh residential, uh, commercial property. And then one other with a business group. Out of the nineteen members, there's only two possible positions that really have. The ability for grassroots, for Tabor supporters. That are not, there's gonna be maybe a scattering of elected, but the majority, it seems to be um. That I don't see what we're gonna get out of this. There's also some questions about this. They'll convene um, December nineteenth and have to report in March. They also have prohibited anybody who is a petition representative. Or an agent for a issue committee to put a property tax measure on the ballot next year. Prohibited one of those people from serving on this task force. And the task force is supposed to evaluate. All of these citizen initiatives that I assume citizen initiatives, we already know there's some. Um, that are going to be on the ballot. So here's a government body working on analyzing those measures. And I don't know what I hope we have to get much out of this task force and. They bring up something about they're gonna be evaluating a. A different way of taxing property called land value tax. So people can keep an eye on that, but. Uh, if they'll start to meet um, starting in later December. I don't know if you have comments about that one.
Just my two cents, real quick, this is a taxpayer funded committee. That's going to meet, it's all politically connected people, the vast majority of them in government or working with government already. Coming up with schemes to put on the people of Colorado to take our tax money, that's what I'm expecting to happen with this task force. And uh rewrite our tax code and potentially put something on the ballot in twenty twenty four and figure out ways to fight back against the citizen directed initiatives that we're gonna see in twenty twenty four. That's kind of how I read it, and that's what I expect this task force to do. Unfortunately, it seems like another uh, you know, government committee set out to conspire against the people.
Well, the one last fall, I, you know, I got a little bit depressed after watching, you know, the predestiny that was. There in this special session, but at the end of the day. It comes down to thank God, we live in a state where we have direct ballot access. And they can do whatever they want down at that capital, but we can come back with a citizen initiative. And so there's hope for the future. Alright, moving on, um, see, this is one that got postponed indefinitely. So that's pretty much one of the ones that was an option on task force. I'm gonna move on to the next one. Yes, it was killed. Um, this one postponed indefinitely. Uh, so we go back to these, okay, this one, let's see, that was Bob Marshall. This one is Mike Lynch um and Pelton, two Republicans. Uh, it was supposed to be like in more of an all encompassing property tax relief measure. Provided more certainly than the Democrat package handed us, and this one also killed, postponed indefinitely. Right off the get go, right in the first committee. Got anything to say about that one? Or you want me to keep flying through those? Okay. This is another one, this was two Republicans, uh, creation of a task code task force. And I've, I, you know, I didn't pay real close attention to these, but you certainly saw in. The one Republican one that I looked at. More of a desire to have less elected, like, like almost populating the whole thing. And a lot more. Like citizen groups, a business group organization, somebody who is against Tabor, like even the Republican one. A a group that regularly um is supporting our taxpayers' bill of rights. And a group that is regularly opposing our taxpayers' bill of rights, that kind of. Uh, because that's really, really, it is tied to Tabor a lot. I mean, they, the legislators, they don't even know the tax protections that are in there. Uh, the the dep- or or they don't want to acknowledge them, that might be better. Anyway, that one was killed. This one, um, and I think this one was bipartisan, I think the Ortiz's.
Yeah, Dave David Ortiz, Representative Ortiz is a Democrat.
Yeah, and Ron Weinberg, I know is Republican. So this one was going after the homestead property tax exemptions. And um, in short, this one uh was killed. So uh, just like earlier this year, now I'm not gonna say that um, I am crying over. Not increasing the homestead property tax exemptions. Because at the end of the day, somebody is covering the bill, there's a backfill mechanism. The backfill comes basically on the back of a younger generation. That is far less likely to see pensions and some of the things that were available for those who are now seniors. There's no income means with the homestead, so I I'm just expressing that because people always kind of think, oh, it's good, well, there. There's consides to it too, somebody's, somebody's paying the bill.
Well, and and the thing to remember about this is they would have used the Tabor refund money. So I've been uh looking at the fiscal note ninety seven and a half million dollars of Tabor refund money, they instead of giving it back to the people who paid it. They're gonna redistribute it based on this special category of people they're creating. So it's a, it's a, you know, a little government redistribution scheme, so reason enough to oppose it right there.
It is, and the only reason I ever give that one forgiveness, like for meaning that um, is voters at least. Uh, um, voted on that one. Versus the redistribution that we saw earlier with the, you know, earned income credits, where you and I didn't get a vote on that. And really going back to that, if anybody could call Douglas Bruce and get him on the phone. He he's very responsive. Um, I want to go back to this, the earned income tax credit actually is creating another income tax. Category, level, and ta- that violates Tabor. Because Tabor guarantees a flat, uniform income tax. When you are giving somebody, and again, Douglas Bruce has just said this like within the last week. So it's not like going back to interpret, sure, anyway, back away from homestead property tax. So just because that one was killed. Um, the appropriation for Department of Treasury, um. That was really more money going to. Because government has been so ineffective in some ways. And because the problem with government taxes property in the first place. They've got the property tax deferral program where you can keep kicking your property tax bill down the road. And pay it later on when you sell the home. So the government still gets their cut. And this passed, and it's gonna cost some money, some money to collect the money. Funny. Get a laugh, man, you just can't make this stuff up, can you? Anyway, it's not funny, it's not funny at all, but it's like sick funny, alright. Um, this was the big one. Uh, this opposed this big property tax relief bill that we're looking for. I'm gonna start and then you can go, because I'm sure you got comments too. This is even worse than the one that, I mean, Prop HH was like. Which, what are you giving us? And it had things like, one, it was cutting the assessments. Um, it was cutting the valuation, what's, what's the taxable amount? Small parts, but then it was also going to have some other things in HH. Uh, namely, when it had a property tax cap, but it was soft, soft cap. And then it had um, the bad inflationary clause, it had where it was backfilling using Tabor refunds. But this one still has, i- it's just like, like, this is the one where I want to say. Um, you can't fail because you really didn't try. That's how I feel about their bill. It one gives pretty much the same a- assessment reduction percentage. It gives a little bit larger fifty five thousand now uh of an amount you would not be taxed on. But what it also is not doing is it doesn't have the tax cap in there. And the really big one is that before HH covered residential and the different variety of classes of property. In this one, they didn't give any for business or commercial. But there, there, we did great, we did great. So the mom and pops who are already taxed at the higher assessment. They're already paying, whereas homes are, we're down in the six point seven six five. Businesses are still up in that twenty six, twenty seven. And so they really take that hit. I mean, you talk to businesses and you're like, I don't know, maybe they're paying, I don't know, seven thousand dollars. And you talk to them, you're like, oh my God, you're paying eighteen, twenty four thousand dollars, you know, all. When and they don't get any relief in this one. They don't get any relief in this one. Is this was just for them to brag and say the gate. We gave great property tax relief. God, out of one to ten, ten being the best. Ten's the best you can do. You know, I I wouldn't, I'd be hard pressed to give this a one, really would. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, you, I mean, hit the nail on the head, it's, it's so weak, it's so uh. It's just weak. I mean, it's not preventing any meaningful top property tax relief. So you know, you have a, right now, there's a fifteen thousand dollar subtraction from your property evaluation, this bill increased it to fifty five thousand. Dollar subtraction for calculating your property taxes. And then the wonderful, the wonderful legislators that we have reduced our property tax assessment rate, residential only, as you said. No business relief, their taxes are still skyrocketing, but for single and multifamily homes. You were at six point seven six five percent. Now with this wonderful, amazing bill from our amazing, wonderful governor, it's gonna be at six point seven percent. So it, they effectively reduced the assessment rate by point zero six five percent. And a Colorado Sun article came out earlier today from uh, I believe it was uh Jesse Paul and Brian Eason. Saying the average homeowner in Colorado is gonna save a little over two hundred dollars on their property tax bill due in April. Round of applause, ladies and gentlemen, to our horrible government who wants to rob us of every penny we have. Spending twenty four thousand dollars a day to save people two hundred dollars on average. Really, nothing, nothing was accomplished, no meaningful property tax relief for the people of Colorado, so just, just absolutely ridiculous.
And and what the legislator said, and that is he said it multiple times, within what you and I have been talking about. And I think, by the way, one of the things in here, oh, I know it's in here. Very important to note, we have talked about reducing local mill levy. How long, Brandon? Weeks.
Months, months.
Hours and hours. Go to any of those videos, you can find out all about it. The deadline's now extended, so instead of the December fifteenth, now it's January ten. What they said is, we can't afford to give all the relief. Because one, they were gonna use our Tabor refunds, right, before. And now they were just using two hundred million dollars. Because one, they were gonna use our taper refunds, right, before. And now they were just using two hundred million dollars. Um, of that two hundred million dollars, they could give the residential, but not the business, as we just said. The rest, they said, needs to be local governments having a discussion about how to best treat property taxpayers. So now it is, the ball's been tossed to those local governments. It's in their hands. They have been given now almost a month more, almost a month more, to reduce the mills at the local level. And if local governments, if you don't do it, guess what's coming your way? Take a look, go over to the initiative. I'm talking to all of them out there. You better go over and look at the ballot issues that are gonna be coming your direction. It is your responsibility to do it. And if you don't do it, don't cry, you didn't have a chance. January tenth. And if you passed a motion already, Earl, uh, a resolution. You know Robert's rules of order. You can do a motion to amend. It's really easy, you can do it. And county assessors, oh, you got extra time now. I know it'll be a crunch, but might have to work all the holidays or or the Fridays before. Sorry about that. Get the job done.
All said, Natalie.
Alright, we'll go past, anything else we gotta cover on that one? No, I'm sorry, I was looking at summer electronic benefits transfer program. This is a federal program. Um, if you remember, we passed something last year called FF, voters passed it. And I remember that because F is for food. And what it was doing is taking a portion of high income owner, yeah, income earners in Colorado, because they're the ones that keep, we, people keep taking money from those. And it took part of their income tax, going off memory, part of their income tax, put it into a new taper exam fund, and that was gonna pay for school lunches. So you got all these different things payment. Just remember, ballot issue just passed to pay for school lunches. But now the feds have their program, and it is to provide food. And then for the city, the state to participate. Um, I guessing what it meant was sometimes the government will say the local government, you've gotta do a matching fund, otherwise we're not gonna give you this one. Basically, it's a carrot and a stick kind of a thing. Either you're gonna get it, or we're gonna, you know, the, the shift and we're good to give it to somebody else. To do this program, there has to be five million dollars contributed by state of Colorado to get um, I don't know the numbers, but it was like several million, ten million, twenty million, thirty million, maybe. I, it's a lot of money. So there's a lot of money going into school lunches, is what this comes down to. I don't know if you got any comments about that. That was kind of a side note thing.
I mean, it's an EBT card, you know, your food stamps, forty dollars a month for kids in the summer for food stamps. A federally funded program, but, uh, the cost of administering the program is split between the state and the federal funds. So I mean, it's, you know, it's just another handout, another welfare scheme. Uh, you know, people would say, well, it's federal money, might as well capture that money, but I don't know. That's, it's, it's just another welfare scheme.
Alright, now going on to the one that was also not introduced, not presented publicly. Not available per public review. Not a complicated measure, but little, you know what, so all the more reason, why wasn't this published? I wonder, 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 isn't there a song or something about that? They knew they were gonna run it. Why didn't they publish it on the website for the public to be able to view? Instead, they waited till Friday after the meeting and le- legislative session opened. Matter of fact, I was talking to Chris Kennedy in one of the, um, so it would've been Friday midday. Committee hearings, the one I, um, can't even think it was such a whirlwind. I said, where's the bill? I know you want your, your flat refunds, Chris. Where's the one on, um, the flat refunds? He goes, um, yeah, I think they just introduced it this morning. So, you know, last minute, nope, no. And again, this bill is it, it was, I think it's only like six page, maybe this one's three pages. It's identical really to what they wanted before. There's no reason withhold it from the public. This one was a slam dunk for him to get through. Um, and there is some arguments, I'm just gonna say this. Where taper refunds come from is a pool of income tax, sales tax, fees, all these different ways that government gouges us. Frankly, it is a pool. But taper doesn't mandate the way to refund it, except to say that government has oversight and need not be proportional if you cannot easily identify it. So it does say that it should be really attributed to the person whose taxes, fees, whatever may be, are being taken from them. Because frankly, I don't know a lot of people that pay voluntary, um, and just go hand it away. It's a whole involuntary system. So with that, um, this bill flew through, it is one year, and I, I think there should be a discussion perhaps going, I'm sure there will be, about these taper refund mechanisms. Because there are arguments, and looking back over years, what Republicans had approved. Um, and what is said now can be two different things. Democrats can be held to that same thing. Feeling one way, changing their mind, whatever may be. But I know one thing, very clear from the Democrats. Those who are down at that capital, at least, they want to punish people with a punitive income tax. And they see themselves, they've expressed it, that flattening the taper refunds leads to that punitive income tax. And a punitive income tax, I call it that, it's, it's called progressive income tax by some, but I don't wanna, I'm not gonna fall for that. It's a punitive income tax, and if somebody's got a better name, great, but it's not progressive income tax. That is the positive spin they wanna add to it. It's a punitive income tax. You are penalized for being productive. You are judgmental because you assume somebody was handed something without being in their shoes. All of those things are very disturbing. Um, go ahead, I'll, I'll stop before I go off on a rant about that.
No, please, please, I love the rants, especially with this. I mean, exactly, I mean, you hit the nail on the head. It's penalizing the most productive people in society, the wealth generators. The people who are fulfilling the needs and wants of a community through the free market are being penalized. It is a, a totally uh, punitive, uh, income tax system where the people, uh, this category of people gets rewarded, these people who are more productive get penalized. And it's all fair, and I'm sure you know the smirks on the state legislators. So happy to go after those rich people and give it to the, to everybody else. You know, they're, they feel like they're Robin Hood down there, but they're really just robbing all of us because it's not fair. If you pay more taxes, you should get more tax money back. You know, this is bill specifically, this Senate Bill twenty three B, a zero zero three, uh, looking at the fiscal note in front of me. If you make over a hundred and four thousand dollars, you lose. If you make over a hundred and four thousand dollars, you lose money, you lose tax refund money that would otherwise be constitutionally guaranteed to come back to you. If you're making less than a hundred and four thousand dollars, you're, you are gonna benefit from this. So it's just a, it's another wealth redistribution scheme, very similar to the earned income tax credit in a way that, uh, it just redistributes the tax money based on, on a different mechanism. So it's a total, uh, scheme, you know.
And what part, going back to that earned income tax credit. They, they could be all sorts of different situations. One of the things that I've heard Democrats talk about it, um, in off record type things. Um, they've been trying to get this through, uh, with that EITC, you do not have to have a social security number. So wh- when they, I've, I've heard them, you know, we, we didn't even think the, you know, the Republicans, we're not even sure if they caught that. Almost like, that's very purposeful, and I mentioned that, I, I, I'm not gonna go off on it very long, but the loose, loose, loose guidelines that are present, again, that's what we were talking about with thirty three percent of um, the IRS themselves, saying thirty three percent, um, are suspect. That brings about court questions. Anyway, going on to, this is one of the ones that died. It was a big one by Kirk Meyer Paglisi. And it was not favored by those who have really, really uh, gone into this issue because it did authorize backfill. So it was gonna have more property tax relief, uh, quite a bit more, a lot more than the Democrat bill. But it had a backfill mechanism. That money would have come out of the state reserves. And when I was referencing back, way to beginning this video like three hours ago. Um, that was, I was talking about, uh, the government says they can't ever save, but we got this reserve. And then Democrats were criticizing this one, saying, well, I'm not going to vote for this because it would touch the reserves, which we have worked so hard to save up. But the bill was destined to die. Got anything on that one?
Just that this was the, uh, you know, the counterweight, I guess, for the, the Democrat bill that did end up passing. This was kind of the Republicans' version of it. I know some of the more grassroots Liberty Republicans weren't too happy with it specifically because of that backfill mechanism. But just to give people an idea, instead of reducing taxes by, uh, the assessment rate by point zero six five, as the Democrats did, this would have reduced it by point two six five, so a little bit better increase. Of course, nothing too crazy, but it also would have helped the, uh, commercial property tax assessment rate, that would have been decreased as well. So one of the big, uh, differences between the two bills is that, yeah, this would have been more relief, more, a larger reduction in taxes in general. Uh, but also would have helped the commercial industry, which the Democrats did not do at all. So just pointing that out.
Yeah, and it should be noted, um, cuz I don't think we have it later on, but just a few days before this legislature, the special session opened, um, a cuz I've already been asked by email and other spots, Colorado Concern uh, has submitted a petition initiative, started the process for next year. Uh, actually, it'll start this year, I'm sorry. November thirtieth is a hearing. There's, they have submitted a citizen initiative, although they're a business group. That would limit property tax increases year over year to two point five percent. Along with changing how properties are valued. So instead of these, uh, neighboring sales uh, guiding what your property is gonna be valued at, it would instead be along the lines of when your property was sold. Um, have you been there a certain amount of years? I haven't read it in great depth. But now I see they already knew these things were in the works. See, if you're if you're privileged, cuz like, the group presenting this property tax cap also stood by the governor to promote HH when it started. And now this group's turned around just days before the session opens and submitted a pretty tight property tax cap, and two point five percent plus changing evaluations. So you know, things were, there were some heated conversations going on days before these bills were introduced. But anyway, um, but that bill was killed. I mean, keep going here. Um, this one was expanding the exemptions. Uh, I never looked at this one great in depth. Uh, it was postponed indefinitely, but I think it was along the lines of senior homestead. And it was a dollar amount, not the portability, uh, portability factor, but it, you remember what this one
Yeah, I got, I got it up in front of me here. It, it's just a homestead exemption for seniors and veterans with a disability. Uh, increasing the amount that they would be, uh, would be reduced from their, you know, uh, assessment value, I guess.
Okay.
So, so it's very similar, just a Senate version, just Gloria Liston's version of, uh, of what the House tried to pass as well.
And this is the one we talked about earlier. This is the real property valuation cap. This is the one that would have kept it at six percent. Um, you wanna, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, no, like I said earlier, this is, uh, one I testified on. I was really happy to support Senator Van Winkle's bill. Uh, it really would have just been, it's so simple, it was so clean, it was so clear. It would have restored the sense of trust in a state government, was kind of my argument to say, hey, we call this special session at extraordinary cost, you know, an extraordinary circumstance for this extraordinary measure to just, just let's put a cap on it for one year, cap it at the six percent growth. And then we'll revisit it here in January when the legislative session convenes. Of course, the Democrats were not happy with that because it would have cost, you know, schools how much money. It would have cost the state government so much money, but you know, hey, they're already gonna get record property tax increases. Let's just lower this assessment rate, uh, let's just lower this evaluation rate by just a little bit, just to get us through this little, uh, tight spot. I mean, that's really all they needed to do. Uh, they could have had the special session done in three days, introduce this, pass it through both and moved on, but of course, they didn't wanna do that. They wanted all their little pet projects and special interests needed to be funded as well.
Yeah, um, clean cut, especially going back to money stays local. Instead of being funneled through the state government, like it's what we ended, what we've got now with Senate Bill one, which was passed and I'm sure the governor is anxious to sign it. Go on to the next one here, then. I think we're getting close here.
Oh, that's it. That's the last one.
Yep. And, and that was, that was the best bill. And again, it was introduced earlier this year. Killed then. So a lot of this just looks like destiny. And we talked about not wanting to go into the special session. Uh, I know there were people calling for it. Uh, it was a mixed bag, but the, and there's feeling no sense going back over it now. As they ended the legislative session, uh, mid afternoon today. What was noted at, when the speaker was closing out the meeting is that just think about it unless just over fifty days, we'll be back in this room. And I know some of you are already drafting bills. It's a fifty days, yeah, I thought it was fifty five, forty five, whatever it is on the calendar. Far sooner than I want.
Yeah, I'm right there with you. It's gonna be a, another challenging year. It's gonna be very interesting, at least, uh, you know, kind of looking at twenty twenty four. Uh, the end of fighting among the Democratic Caucus will be very interesting to watch, uh, is at least very entertaining for me these last couple days. With all the shenanigans down there and, and people yelling and closing down things, and it's gonna be interesting to see how that continues into twenty twenty four. But yeah, I mean, uh, you know, business as usual. I think, uh, the, uh, check out my, uh, I'll put them together, but I did some like little short interviews with about five different Republican legislators on Friday down there, and I think it was a minority leader, Mike Lynch, who said, you know, the cake's already been baked. They walked into this knowing exactly what they were gonna pass, no room for debate, no room for discussion, no room for bipartisanship. This was the plan from day one, uh, last week to push this through and they got what they wanted, and, and that's how it goes. So I do, I have to applaud you, Natalie. I know, uh, if you, people can go back, if they've been following our video series earlier this year. They could see where you, uh, were very, uh, skeptical of the idea of a special session, and I agree with you entirely, a special session was a terrible idea. It was unfortunate to see this happen because, uh, you and I know better, or you know, you know well enough that these politicians, these legislators are gonna use this opportunity to pass all sorts of little tricky bills to, to chip away at our taper refunds. To grow the size of government and pay off their special interest friends. So that's what happened during the special session, uh, so, you know, it's kind of a lesson learned that this special sessions are not necessarily a great thing. You know, but hey, we're gonna save, people are gonna save two hundred dollars off their property tax bill next year, you know, so there you go.
Well, and it, it just, between those, all that combination of bills, and, and I would really, for anybody, I'm sure you'll bring it up. Probably in your weekly roundup, maybe you will. Uh, Andy Kenny's article really did a good job putting it together. I've been, I've worked with two CPR reporters. I mean, that worked with them, but, um, interacted with them quite a bit, and both have done a, a good job at this, really dig into some of the truths of it. With the one thing I do wanna leave with, you know, it was frustrating. And there's so many people out there just don't even know what occurred over the last four days. That's gonna be like two weeks of having people come up and go, really great that you got, you guys killed HH. And I'm gonna have to keep going over and over and over what we just talked about right here. And I'm gonna get it real quick, I'm just, I don't even wanna talk about it. Four days, they destroyed what the voters had said. They just did, you know, uh, and there's gonna be, cuz people don't know. But people should be demanding something in the transparency because this is, and I don't care if it's Republicans or Democrats or whatever. There should be respect for the process itself to be able to say, alright, go ahead, you know, wait until that day to Wait until that day to introduce a bill. I mean, e- even that is, that's just unacceptable, really. But fine, open it up at nine AM and then you convene at one PM. So at least everybody would know, and, and I mean, the people, when the own legislators are sitting on these committees. I mean, I'm a citizen, yeah, but those are the guys that got a vote on it. I would be, just be I'd just be scurrying, you know, screaming bloody murder. If I was treated like that as an elected official, they have another elected come up and go, here, I'm giving you this bill right now, and then you're gonna vote on it right now. I, 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 that's just not the way it operates in the real world. So for people to speak up, change that process. Uh, we had a rally, um, it was, I, we were waiting, because we didn't know when the session was gonna open. It's kind of have a hard, tell people come testify, do all these things. So we have a makeshift rally down there, uh, property tax protest, um, taper rally support. And one thing that was nice for people who showed up, we gave them the talking points and they were able to go right into that capital. So we, I think we would have far more people come if we knew how this was going to work, the time things would start agendas. But for those who did show up, I think it was very valuable for them to be able to go in there and see the shenanigans firsthand as to what was going on. And at the end of the day, although all of this is depressing. Somewhat be, I mean, we got a session opening up, still at the end of the day, all that work against Prop HH paid off. Uh, that stuck with them. The good news is, what they did over these last four days is a one-year period. We don't have the ten-year debt plus forever that was written in HH. So at the end of all of this. We have, we're still winning, but that vigilance and more people who wanna get involved will help us, and maybe we can change this course. I just don't want people walking away going, well, we just lost and everything I gave was worthless, because that's not true at all. Uh, they really took a beating with HH and the fact that they just came away with a one-year junk. Um. Taper funds diverted, all of that. We still have a a way we can change this going forward, be involved with this next legislative session. And I think the coalition that's been built this last year will keep going forward. And I think it'll have a lot of power for us, especially as we move into the property tax citizen initiatives. We're gonna need as many volunteers as possible next year, not only on the education, but also getting signatures.
Perfect, yeah, I'd encourage people to sign up for the mailing list for FreeStateColorado uh dot com. Keep you updated going forward into next year. Twenty twenty four is gonna be a big year. Key takeaways, I would say, you know, the Democrats failed, they failed to pass meaningful property tax relief. Uh, it was minor, it was insignificant for most people, it was, it was total waste of time. They redistributed our taper refund money, money that should be coming back to you. They handed out to their special interest, decided who's gonna get the money, picked winners and losers. Totally inappropriate, total slap in the face to the voters who voted down proposition HH. And you know, they're just expanding the size of government, the scope of these government programs. Just a total scheme to increase government control over our lives without actually helping the average person, especially the average property owner going into twenty twenty four. So voters need to remember that. Uh, the, the one benefit I would say to the special session is nearly every sing, every Democrat, every, regardless of party, but every politician who's on that cusp of maybe gonna lose their election next year, because they only won by a couple hundred votes, those really thin, narrow races. They all have voted bad on property taxes. They have voted bad on our tax refund money during this special session, and they need to be held accountable for it. So there's a vote that people can use against them come next election time, and I think there's some value there. So that's one of my key takeaways. I'm excited, I'm very hopeful and optimistic for twenty twenty four. And I gotta say, just the, the shenanigans, you know, bringing that up again, the entertaining, infighting in the Democratic Party Caucus is a, is a good sign, if you ask me, for uh opportunity for uh more liberty minded people to, to have some more influence going forward, so. Perfect. Awesome. Any, any final thoughts, Natalie?
Just, uh, for those who are watching these things, I know we get a lot of, um, a lot of feed into our stuff. But this is a, a very useful way to get businesses and others engaged uh with the treatment that was given here. As we move forward and we need parts of the community to really stand up and, and just not, uh, not fall for that glossy flyer that comes in, remember some of these core issues and how they treated the business community. The mom and pops, the backbone of America, those kind of things, just keep that in mind, because number one, everybody's gonna go into the holidays, forget all about it. Was that three-day session, I remember hearing about that, but when those January property tax bills come. And, and they'll probably be late January now. This is a good time to remember how this discussion all started and who did what.
Perfect. Well, Natalie, thank you so much. Thank you for being down there for all four days. I can't, you know, I was lucky, lucky to be down there for one day. Unfortunately, couldn't make it the other times, but thank you for your, uh, you know, your activism, your pursuit of.
I did remote. I did re, I did do remote today.
Well, thanks for being down there the other days, really appreciate it. Uh, because you know, as we know, the media, the, people don't get the full story unless you're down there, you don't really, you don't really get to experience it and understand the whole process. So thank you very much for all of that, all of your work, and look forward to talking to you again soon.
That's good, thanks.